Yeah, meeting to order please. This is the City of Lighthouse Point Building, Zoning and Planning, Planning and Zoning Board, the meeting of March 5th, 2019. Sherry, if you could take our attendance.
Yes, Michael Collins.
Here.
Kenton Hydeck.
Here.
Mark Mackey.
Here.
Susan Mottley.
Here.
Fred McLean.
Here.
Phil Gallo.
Here.
Dennis Smith.
Also here. If we could, any more? Motion for the minutes from February 5th.
So moved.
I'm moved to accept the minutes from.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If, all of you are certainly welcome to have your cellphones here. If you would be so kind as to put them on silent, that would be appreciated, so that they don't go off while we're in the meeting. The first public hearing we have is a discussion item. Before we do that, David, why don't we do the brief tutorial on Sunshine Law? We seem to be getting emails that are sent to all of us, and I was concerned, and I know a few of the other board members seem to be concerned, about whether that's a Sunshine Law violation, or when it crosses the line and may become one. So if you could briefly tell us that, so we don't accidentally do something.
And if I could just clarify, none of what I got was to, other than me. I didn't, it was no one else was copied on them.
No, the one from Leo, for instance. Leo has.
These that just came in yesterday and today, is what I'm referring to.
Oh, yeah, those weren't the ones.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. David Tolst is with the City Attorney's Office. The issue with respect to emails, and other forms of social media, and the Florida Sunshine Law, are of particular importance to our office in the city, in order to ensure that there's open and transparent discussion of items that come before the board. The concern with emails that are sent to all the board members, is that you are all copied on a piece of communication. And under the Sunshine Law, in an instance where two or more members of the same board exchange communications regarding an item which is foreseeably going to come before your board, is considered to be a meeting. And public meetings have to be noticed, and minutes have to be taken. So if you or a fellow board member have an exchange of communications outside of a meeting such as tonight, you would have had to posted notice and essentially invited the public to that communication, and you would have to take minutes. The fair to do that is a potential misdemeanor, criminal violation under Florida law, potentially with monetary and incarceration in serious instances. So what our recommendation is, in order to avoid any issues, is that if you do get an email where you see, or you even think that it's possible, because it could be a blind copy, so you don't know everybody who's copied on an email, is that you do not hit reply, you do not hit reply at all, and you just accept that communication for what it is. If you feel that you need to respond in some manner to that individual, that is your decision, but we would not recommend that you do that, especially if it's with respect to an item that's coming before the board. And that's very similar to any, any one of you who may be approached by anybody. You have no obligation to meet with them or speak with them, with respect to any item that comes before the board. And we would treat emails the same as text messages, you know, that you may receive from anybody as well. So that is a very brief discussion of the Sunshine Law. I know that my law partners, myself and our firm, have provided board training to city boards in the past, and, you know, I am, as well as my fellow members of our firm, are more than happy to make a more lengthy, in-depth presentation regarding Sunshine Law, public records at your convenience. Thank you very much.
Let me just ask one or two questions. Mark, have you had any kind of lessons out of Sunshine, like three years ago, when I was on C A B? Kenton, how about you?
Same thing, communicating.
So, but nothing since you've been on the Planning and Zoning Board?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just leave that to you, Glenn and John, and this, you know, you can decide how best to try to get us all up to speed on that, so we don't accidentally do something we're not supposed to do. Bill?
Mr. Chair, as you know, I've served on some county boards, and what the county does is, they have a, once a year, presentation to the board, even if the board hasn't even changed. And the attorney gets up and fundamentally does a PowerPoint presentation on the Sunshine Law, does and don'ts. They might want to consider that as an agenda item.
That's what I was saying. I think Glenn and John can figure out with David, how to best do this, and that would make a lot of sense to me, though, but why don't we just leave it to them?
What was that, Eric?
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, item number four, discussion item regarding street parking of commercial vehicles in residential zoning districts.
At your last meeting, we had a discussion, presentation regarding the issues associated with traffic and parking and nuisances created as a result of construction, trucks, vans, traffic associated with construction in residential areas within the city. I believe this evening we have a follow-up to that. I believe the chief of police is here, as well as some contractors, to address any questions or issues that you may have with respect to this issue.
Where's the chief? Why don't you come up? Come on up. You were sitting in the dark back there, chief, sorry. If you could state your name and tell us your position, that would be great.
Sir, my name is Ross Lekat. I'm the police chief here in the City of Lighthouse Point.
Superb. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't necessarily come here to make a presentation, but I do understand that the Planning and Zoning Board did address some concerns that they had about street parking, parking of vehicles at construction sites, commercial vehicles parked in the street, and some of the hazards that those types of things cause. I don't think that there's any question that, especially when you have a street where there are a number of construction sites actively going on, that having large numbers of commercial vehicles parked along a roadway, does create some hazards and requires some negotiation by our residents to work their way through local streets. But it's not just construction vehicles, it's also lawn maintenance trucks and trailers, and pool companies, and deliveries, and moving trucks, and even residents who tend to park their vehicles out in the street. We have narrow streets throughout our city, and when cars park on the edge of a roadway, or commercial vehicles do, you virtually have maybe a single lane that has to be negotiated by vehicles going in opposite directions. And it does present some challenges to people that have to make their way around the city. But that being said, we haven't had circumstances where emergency responders, including police and fire, or rescue vehicles, have not been able to get to a homeowner or a location in the city as a result of this. We do get complaints on occasion from people that live in our city, about the difficulties of negotiating their way around certain streets where there is heavily trafficked areas, where commercial vehicles are parked and residents are parked. But for the most part, people find their way around those areas, and they make the best of the circumstances.
So chief, how about when they completely close a street down, that's a street that is on a cul-de-sac street, and those occasions when your officers have gone out and asked them to move, and they've refused?
I heard that that came up at a previous meeting, and honestly, I must say that I'm not aware of any circumstance where one of my police officers had to go out to a location where vehicles were parked on both sides of the street, and an owner of one or both of those vehicles failed to move after being directed to do so.
Well, I can tell you, it happened on my street, and I saw the officer ask them, and I saw them say no. And I was there when my street, on a number of different occasions, was completely shut down by the construction vehicles. I mean, totally shut down, you could not go in or out. And the construction people were not really concerned that you couldn't get in or out of the street. They had what they wanted to get done, and if it wasn't convenient for you, that was too bad.
Well.
And I watched your officer ask them, and they said no.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, I'm not going to deny that that didn't happen. If you're saying it did, I'm not aware of that circumstance happening. I would think that if the street was completely blocked by vehicles parked in both directions, one of my officers would have directed the owner of one of those vehicles to move their vehicle. And if they failed to do so, it created a traffic safety hazard, and our officers would have the right to, number one, ticket one of those vehicles or both. And if they failed to move, and it created a traffic hazard, we could potentially tow one of those vehicles from being in a position where they were obstructing traffic. My guess is that it's probably the exception and not the rule, that that happens on occasion, depending on how many construction vehicles, and what type of work is being done at the time. But we certainly would make every effort to prevent that type of condition from taking place in the city.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ross? Okay, thanks. Who else we have, David?
I've spoken with Mr. Loviski earlier today, and he indicated that there may be some contractors here who may be able to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, we have police contractors, other officers on the scene. Would you like to come up to the podium and introduce themselves?
Sure. If you could spell your last name and give us your address.
Jim Morgan, M-O-R-G-A-N, 2641 Northeast 27th Avenue.
Thank you.
Thirty-year resident, thirty-year builder in Lighthouse Point. And we've got a couple of issues here. Occasionally, on these tight streets, when a major piece of equipment comes in, like a crane, there will be a temporary blockage. But the biggest problem you have here is, we went through all the years of Michael Friend and Remy, and what a bad citizen he was as a builder. And we have all these regulations that, the biggest one being the construction fences, okay? I understand protecting the neighbors from construction noise, dirt, and debris. But if you left the front of the lot open, where a crane could back in, or a delivery truck could back in, the neighbors on both sides and on the water would be protected. However, there's a ton of parking there. There's ten cars that can pull in off the street. As it is now, the dumpster goes in sideways, the trusses go in sideways, there's nowhere to park, and that has created a problem. But the other issue is.
Before you go on, though, that sounds like a great potential solution, if the front of the property did not have to be fenced.
Correct.
Is the only reason it was fenced is, what do you think the reason that we?
Michael Friend was such a bad builder, he trashed all the neighbors around him, and we had an outrage about how dirty the sites are, how Scott is a good builder, Roger's a good builder, I'm a good builder. We clean our sites. We don't, we respect the neighbors. When you get guys that come in that do not respect the neighbors, now the community's in an outrage. Like, these builders are just, you know, they're filthy. You clean your job site every day, that's what code enforcement's for. If you have a dirty job site, Jim Finley can pull up and say, "Clean it up," or you're going to get a ticket. It's really simple. But now that we've fenced the front of these sites, where the access for our dumpsters, our deliveries are so limited, that's when the trucks end up backing up on the street, they can't get in, the neighbors are, you know, I mean, that, to me, is a simple solution.
So you don't, you don't have a problem with the fencing on the side?
Oh, no. The fencing on the side protects the neighbors, and on the back protects the waterfront, that's great. Leave the front open.
Would most of the vehicles then be able to park on the site, instead of in the street, if you didn't have the fences in the front?
Except for the occasional material delivery where roof trusses come in, they take up a big space. But now the dumpsters go in this way, and take up boom, 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 like three spaces where if they could swing in without a fence, they go in straight and they drop, or the material drops, and five, six, seven trucks can be off the street. The second thing, and I understand the, dealing with the citizens, citizens believe that the swale in front of their property is their yard. It's part of the right-of-way. If we pulled in off the street to allow traffic to flow, they call the police. The police comes, say, "Get your truck out of their yard." It's, no, we're not in their yard, we're in your property, the right-of-way. And, I mean, unfortunately, time comes when you need to get off the pavement, and they go, they go preserve. But the problem there is, that the citizens don't understand that's not their property, it's your property, the city's, and we should be able to pull off the road onto the right-of-way. I mean, not do intentional damage, but I mean, that's, that's part of the right-of-way. And we're not allowed to use that now, we have to stay on the pavement. And we stay on the pavement, we crowd the street, people are obstructing.
So if you got rid of the fence in the front, would that take care of?
That would take care of eighty percent of your cluster.
Okay.
Eighty percent of the cluster. And to be honest with you, Fort Lauderdale does not require fences, Pompano doesn't require fences, you're filthy. This was all a knee-jerk reaction to Michael Friend being a jerk.
Got it.
He's gone. He's long gone. And the good builders like us will take care of our sites, we keep them clean, respect the neighbor. And that would, that would be a big, big step to alleviating this problem.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Morgan?
Is there any, is there any requirement, because it seems to me that the problem, the most problematic moment would be when you're erecting trusses. You've got a crane on site, it's swinging trusses, that's a big hullabaloo. Is there any requirement for notification of neighbors on a day that you plan on erecting?
No, no, but if you didn't have the fence, the crane could pull right off the street and sit on the lot. I mean, that's the problem now, is because you've got this fence. And when the fences were first introduced, I was here in front of this, at the city commission, well, why can't you just take it down on that day and put it back up the next day? You're talking thousands and thousands of dollars to move a fence in, out, in, out, and out. So now you have this fence in the front, and there's only, we all put two gates on, the crane can back in, no one else can park, the trusses have already taken up this space, the dumpsters have taken up that space. And the other problem with Lighthouse Point is, we have pretty small lots, for one different property. You go to other places, lots are bigger. But literally, if you got rid of that front fence, or the requirement for the front fence, let's say that I take the front fence down for a month during the heavy construction, code enforcement's on me right away, "Where's your fence?" And I'm going through all this routine. I really think that the side fences and the back fence protects the neighbors, and if a contractor is that worried about his site being secure, he can pay the money to put a fence in, take it out, but that just eliminates so much parking, it doesn't make any sense. And other cities don't do it.
Michael?
I think they're both good ideas. The only problem I have with the swale, and legally, I'm not addressing that, is after a rain, I can't tell you how much grass I've had to replace.
Oh, no, 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 and I agree. And the way the code is written, which has always kind of pissed me off in my house point, is that you don't own it, but you have to maintain it. If the owner is required to maintain his swale, and yet, I understand the thing, but if I pull off the road on, and I'm in public right-of-way, why the police calling?
No, I like the idea, I'm just saying there's, there's got to be some common sense.
Don't, well, and that's the whole point. And once again, with Scott and Roger, common sense, if you're a legitimate builder that respects the community, common sense. The first thing I do when I go to a job site is I knock on each door, here's my business card. Somebody's going to piss you off. Somebody's going to drive on your grass, ruin your sprinklers, do this, do that. Call me, we'll fix it. Okay? And we're, we have a lot in our toes that reacted to a guy that said, "I don't give a damn about you," you know? And he's gone. We're here. We're still paying for it.
Thank you very much for your input.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Scott, I think you wanted to get up. Could you state your name, spell your last name, and tell us your address, please?
Scott Godoy, last name spelled G-O-D-O-Y. I'm the owner of Summer Builders of Florida, and want to first apologize for our contribution to the problems. And I'm a longtime resident of Lighthouse Point, live next door to and across the street from construction myself, and appreciate how difficult it can be. While we try to make the smallest footprint possible in neighborhood, clearly we fell short recently, and sometimes the subcontractors, even employees, don't share, necessarily share our values and attitudes.
Scott, did you hear what Mr. Morgan suggested might be a significant contribution to solution? What do you think about the?
I think what he's saying is exactly correct. The fences do push more people out into the streets, including materials, than if they weren't there. We understand why they were part of the code, due to people's lack of respect for the neighborhoods, and trying to contain messes and debris on construction sites.
So you think that might be able to remove a number of the vehicles that end up in the street, if you had no front fence, no one of those green front fences?
Yes, during, during a large portion of the project, yes. Towards the end of the project, the fences come down regardless. And the end of a project is the most difficult, that's when you have just about everybody that's worked in that house, in front of that house, parked. And they're going back and forth in their vehicles, getting materials and such. What we can do on our end is, you know, when we set out our start sheets, there's a list of expectations on there, and on that list of expectations is that everyone has to park on the same side of the street, no one can block driveways, no one can park on the grass, even though it is a swale in public right-of-way, we still tell them not to, because it is very aggravating to the residents, and I fully appreciate that, as I said, I live next door to and across the street from construction before, and appreciate how difficult it is. So we can enforce it more on our end, and have consequences for those that don't follow those rules. Inevitably, you're going to have a crane on site that you're offloading large materials, that does take place, you know, mostly in the, during the midsection or beginning of the construction. Sometimes there's, you know, large trees that are delivered with a crane, that would require that, but it's not, not often. It's mostly during the midsection of the construction, where the lack of construction has helped quite a bit.
I mean, I can, from my own personal experience, I can say that when you just shut one lane down, that was fine. It's when you shut both lanes down that it was a lot more troubling, because then they couldn't get in and out.
Yes.
And so we, we really, at the end of the project, for the two houses you did on my street, the ends of the projects weren't that bad, because it was, yeah, there's a lot of cars, but they were all on one side of the street.
And then the remodel.
And you could still go on the other side of the street.
And then there was a remodel started directly from.
That was, that was, but it was when you, when you shut the entire street down, and it would be shut down for.
Well, that wasn't intentional, and everyone's heard about it, and there's been consequences.
But you think that front fence would do, go a long way to help eliminate that?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
We have a third vote?
Yes.
Sure.
Robert Strauss, I live at 4431 Northeast 27th Avenue. I own Strauss Construction. We need the front fence for safety. It keeps children out of the construction sites, and if the front fence wasn't there, the dumpsters would be filled overnight by the neighbors. So the front fence is essential. We have two sixteen-foot wide gates in the front of the fences, and it's, it'd be a construction hazard, having people walking in to the sites.
Can I ask a question?
What about moving the fence line back on the front, so it's not, so there's room for the subs to park in front of the fence?
Put it on the property line, which is off the street.
Well, I've seen some fences that, you know, you could park parallel, and other ones where you could put straight in, fences further back.
Yeah, it depends on the swale that's there.
This is just really a hearing for us to continue to look at this.
Right.
So we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just trying to hear from everybody.
Yeah, I heard the other two builders say the front fence would be, if it wasn't there, it'd be easier, but it, at night, it protects the property, because we lock the gates.
Do you build in Pompano?
I build all over.
Because from what I think I heard, Pompano doesn't seem to have a fence, front fence?
Deerfield. But it's up to the builder in some cities.
And if it was up to you as a builder to do it or not do it, but those that are okay with it, but it seems that Scott and.
Jim.
Jim would be okay with it. That would eliminate a lot of the parking that goes on in the street, at least on their sites. You wouldn't have to if you didn't.
You can pull in behind the fence.
And you could do that, too.
Yes.
Again, we're just exploring possible solutions here, we're not.
Right, right, right.
We're not coming up with the answer yet.
Right.
Sure.
I just want to clarify something you mentioned.
Uh-huh.
So did you say you have two sixteen-foot gates, or sixteen-feet a gate?
Two sixteen-foot wide gates on each side of the property.
So that would allow you to bring vehicles in and then close the gates at night, but still energize the front yard for construction parking?
Yeah, we don't leave vehicles in overnight, but.
No, 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 I'm saying you can energize the front yard during operations for parking via the gates, but at night, you could still secure the site. Is that what you're saying?
Right, uh-huh. Okay. Kenton?
With the gates, the trusses you're talking about, they're got to open either in or out. If they open out, depending on how you've got them situated, they would have to open all the way in, all the way out, for you to utilize all that space, and then be able to lock up at night, is that right?
Yeah, they open both ways.
All right. If they opened out, they'd have to open all the way, two fence to fence, otherwise they'd be sticking out in the street if they're sixteen feet, right?
Well, they're eight and eight.
Eight and eight, so you had eight feet out into the street, or eight feet into the property.
Right, and the property lines are eight foot behind the street edge, so they're never out in the street.
Okay, that's very helpful. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other? John, you have any other comments from people?
No, sir. Roger's on, who's going to be here, who's going to be in the show, we invited four of us.
Okay, I would like to add, put this on the agenda for next month, because we could continue to talk about it, but we have a lot of people here, so we probably need to get into the other hearings. But I really want to tell you guys, we appreciate you coming, I think your input is very helpful, and it will help us make a recommend, what we're doing, if we do it, is making a recommendation to the city commission. We obviously can't do anything directly ourselves, but we can make a recommendation to the city commission. So we're just gathering information, so that we have some ability to, at some point here, talk about it, and decide whether we're going to make a recommendation to the commission or not. So thank you very much for coming and giving us some input. We're going to move on to item number five, and since I have a conflict on number five and number six, Mr. Gallo, I'm turning the gavel over to you.
You done your paperwork?
I'm done, and it's turned in.
All righty. So we'll move on to item five, which is case 1818, and David, we have 1818 and 1819, are we going to do these together?
Yeah, I was just talking to Ms. Melgren, and we both agreed it should just be one item.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you'd like me to, I can read the ordinance title into the record?
Sure.
And then we can swear in the witnesses, and we can explain the process that we're going through.
Yep.
This is an ordinance to the city commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to the city's land use plan map to change the designation of an approximately 3.6856 acre parcel generally located at 2701 Northeast 42nd Street, Lighthouse Point, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached here, too, and incorporated herein from commercial recreation to low-medium residential, per end six dwelling units per acre, close per end within a dashed line area, for the purpose of developing up to twenty-two residential units comprised of twenty townhouses and two single-family detached residential units, in conjunction with the redevelopment of a private acre, recommending the Broward County Amendment's Land Use Map, Land Use Plan Map, to change the designation of the parcel from commercial recreation to low-medium residential, per end six dwelling units per acre, close per end within a dashed line area, a question of the Broward County Planning Council, recertified the city's amended map, providing for condos, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time. So at this point in time, this ordinance, the proposed land use amendments, before you for recommendations to the city commission. As far as your own internal procedures, you currently have six members sitting up here tonight. Only five of you are permitted to vote on an item, so, Mr. Vice Chair, I would ask that you work with your board members to see who is going to not vote. They can participate in the discussion, but they can't. They can participate in the discussion, but they can't vote, but we need to let the applicant and the members of the public know who's going to vote at this point in time.
Sure.
So Mark is an alternate member, Kenton, alternate member. Do either of you have a preference to, who wants to participate in the voting tonight? I'll start with you, Mark.
Well, I yielded Kenton the last meeting that we had this situation, so I just assumed participate if I can.
All right, so Kenton, are you okay with Mark?
Absolutely.
All right, so when you say you'd like to participate, I'm assuming that means participate and vote, or participate and not vote? Okay, so Mark will be participating in voting, sharing. Kenton will be participating and giving us his comments but not voting. All righty, so for the benefit of this application, you know this is an application that's been in front of us before. It was tabled at the last meeting. It's had a number of town hall, it's been the subject of a number of town hall meetings. We're very happy here tonight that we're here with an official meeting to try and shepherd this along. It is composed, and it's a very complex amendment, so I'm going to ask that Michelle, our planner, give you a synopsis of the staff report first. I was debating whether I should ask for people to get up and be sworn in, but it's not a quasi-digital meeting, so there's really no requirement for you and the public to be sworn in. I would ask that if you come up and speak, that you'd be kind enough to state your name and your address for the record. That would be nice. But Michelle, if you could give us a synopsis of your staff report and review the process.
Yes, I would be happy to. So for the record again, my name is Michelle Melgren. I am the consultant planner for the City of Lighthouse Point. This is a land use plan amendment for the property known as the Yacht Club, and it's not a proposal to change all of the land use designation, but just a portion of it on approximately three, well, just under 3.7 acres. And right now it has a commercial designate, uh, excuse me, a land use designation of commercial recreation, and what the applicant is proposing is to change that from commercial recreation to residential, to six units per acre, to allow up to 22 dwelling units, proposed at 20 townhomes and two single-family homes. So the development proposal has changed since the last time it came before this board. The number of units has been reduced. We look at two things when we look at a land use plan amendment, and one is to ensure that adequate facilities and services, such as potable water and sewer and police and fire, that all of those are available to serve the site for the use as proposed. And then we also look at the adopted comprehensive plan to determine whether or not it is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. So part of this application process is this lengthy 40-page application that looks at facilities and services, and the applicant has completed that and has demonstrated through analysis as well as by providing letters from service providers that there are adequate services and facilities to serve this proposed development at 22 units per acre. However, I looked at the comprehensive plan, and I've made a recommendation, which is the same recommendation I may have made before, and that is, it's a recommendation from staff, which is just a recommendation for the board's consideration, and of course, the city commission's consideration, but the recommendation still stands for denial at this time, finding that it's not consistent with goal number one, objective 1.2, policy 1.2.2, and policy 1.4.4, all of which generally speak to maintaining the residential orientation of the city to single-family, low-density. This property has density, single-family detached residential to the east and west at three units to the acre. What is proposed is six units to the acre, which would be roughly double, or exactly double, the density. I will acknowledge that to the south of the subject site, there is development at five units to the acre, but I focused on what was to the east and west. And so my staff recommendation, as I just said, still stands for recommendation for denial based on the fact of what lies to the east and west. And that summarizes the application. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Michelle. And before I get into speaking any further, I just want to, for the record, I have had conversations with Terry Patterson about this. He did come to visit with me in my office after his last presentation to the board, and he did, I did speak with him on the phone on the 21st of February. During that conversation, he did start to, I believe inadvertently, mention a conversation he had with another board member, Susan Motley. I quickly cut him off, and we did not have any conversation further than that, but I think for the record, it's important to state that. So Michelle has given us her staff report. I think it just, once again, I would like to clarify for the members of the audience about the process that this application has to go through, because I still believe there's a lot of misunderstanding about what it's going to take to develop this site. So we are in, I would say, step one of a four-step process.
At least, would you like me to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so rather than me do it, because this is not really my profession, I'm just a dumb architect, but...
He's being way too modest, I happen to know, but okay.
A planner could lay this out for you. So you have a sense of what the hurdles we have to go through in order to get the site redeveloped?
So it works like this. So I talk about the comprehensive plan, it's the master plan for the city, if you will, and before any development can take place, the proposed development has to be consistent with this master plan, this map that we have. And so to do that, you have to do this land use plan amendment, and that's what's being considered tonight. This is the first step of the process, and this amendment request will be considered by this board. Ostensibly, a recommendation would be made to the City Commission, and the City Commission would hear it and ostensibly either deny it or recommend approval. And the recommending of approval is actually a recommendation to transmit it to Broward County because of the way the form of government is here in the county, the city's not entirely autonomous with regard to land use, so the county gets to put their finger and two cents into it as well. So it would go to the county, and it would go to the county's land planning agency, which is the Broward County Planning Council. But then it goes to the Broward County Commission, and it goes through that whole process and review, and then it comes back to the city, and if the city determines it's appropriate, they would, at the City Commission level, recommend approval. It's two readings of an ordinance that comes back, that would be the second reading. That's just the first step of the process. The next step that would have to happen would be to rezone the property, and I think a lot of people have a little bit of misconception, thinking this is a rezoning, but it's not. So you'd have to rezone it to a zoning district that's consistent with a six-unit per acre on the master plan, the comprehensive plan. And that would also be a hearing here before this board, and then two readings of an ordinance before the City Commission. But we're not done with that, because then after that, the applicant would have to come back and do the site plan. And the site plan is really the nitty-gritty detail. It's the picture of how everything will look on the ground, where the units will be located, where the recreation facilities are, how the access would work, what the landscaping looks like, and that would go to this board. Does that go to CAV as well?
Yes.
And it would also go to the Community Appearance Board. And so you can see it's a multi-step process, this being the very beginning. I will also add, and I think this is an important point, in this application, they have been very clear in saying, and it is true, that the request tonight is up to 22 units per acre. That does not guarantee them 22 units per acre. When they get down to the site plan, the actual picture of how things look on the ground, it could be that all of the details and requirements for site planning in terms of lot coverage and landscaping and setbacks and everything else, they may not be able to achieve that density. We just don't know at this juncture. And there is no site plan attached to this. This is all conceptual, 30,000-foot, you know, looking down at the forest, so to speak. Do they get up to six units per acre for 22 units or not? And that's what's before you now. So the process would probably take, I would say, at least a year. Eight months to a year going forward from right now. It's not a simple thing, and this is the first of many steps. Shouldn't go forward.
Thank you, Michelle. And I want to, I just want to make, and pardon me if we dwell on this, because I just think it's just important, it's a very important application, doesn't happen very often in our community, and I know the public are very interested. I've seen a number of people at town hall, in fact, I've lived here, I don't know, 30-some odd years, I've never seen so many Lighthouse Point residents in one place at one time. So...
I need to add one thing, if I may, and that is, we were talking about, I was rather inundated with emails myself today, beginning yesterday and all day today, encouraging me to approve it. I don't vote, I don't have any control authority. I did send at the attorney's recommendation all of these emails as I got them over to the board secretary, and I did not respond to any of them.
And you know, that's a good point. I think if any of us have received emails or text messages or whatever, they need to get referred to the secretary for the record, so. I have not done that yet because they're still coming in. Tomorrow sometime, I'll send them all to you. So I want to make this distinction because the last point that Michelle made about the site plan approval. Once we get to that site plan level, we're really judging the applicant's ability to take their zoning entitlement and their land use plan conformance and make it meet our land development regulations, this is the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lighthouse Point. And those land development regulations set forth things like setbacks, heights of buildings, pervious versus impervious, ground cover, access for emergency vehicles, yada, 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 a lot of stuff. That's pretty much what we normally do here, and signage, blue dot. And as, to cite an example, we recently, you may know, there's a project up the street at Lighthouse Point Drive and 39th Street, I forget the name of it, but that site was zoned for 16 units. It's entitled for 16 units, it's zoned for 16 units. When they finally got their site plan approved, it ended up with 12 units. So they ended up with 75% of the number of units that they were entitled to because they couldn't meet the land development regulations of the Code of Ordinances. So that's an important thing to keep in mind. So with that, I think hopefully we've laid enough groundwork for the applicant to make their presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be short and sweet. I just want to thank everybody for all the effort you've put into this the last year. I know it's been long and grueling, and I want to thank everyone in the public for all their efforts, and sorry about...
Just state your name.
Oh, Terry Patterson.
Addison.
2701 Northeast 42nd Street, Lighthouse Point.
Oh, I know that point.
And I want to thank the public for all their support and people who've had a lot of valid concerns that they've brought up and that we've tried to address. Everything is good, the good and the bad, we use it, and I want to thank you all again.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Stephanie Toothaker. I'm an attorney with Trips Scott at 110 Southeast 6th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33301. I know we've been before you before. We appreciate all the time that you've given to us and the consideration of this application. I am going to go through the PowerPoint, and I know you've seen it, but I just want to hit on a couple of high points. Your chair has said a lot of what I had intended to say, and Michelle, in her report, said a lot of what I had intended to say, but those are very good points. Most notably, this is up to 22 acres for the land use plan amendment, and I'll say it throughout the presentation, up to, I'm sorry, up to 22 units, total six units per the acre, "up to" is the key term there. It does not entitle us to that number when we get to either the zoning or the site plan stage. Those are things that have to be determined as we come back before this board and before the City Commission. So real quickly, I know you're all familiar with it, this is the existing aerial of the Yacht Club, and I think this is a very important slide, and I added this in because when we talked about densities, we looked at what are, what's around us and are we compatible as we talk about, I mean, obviously the site now has a commercial recreation land use, and it's actually zoned commercial. It's incompatible, and as Michelle has pointed out, that is something that needs to be fixed through the process, and it's something that we do intend to do, but right now it actually does have a commercial designation on it as far as the zoning goes. You can see around us, there is low-three residential in some areas, but there's also low-five, and we're proposing six. So we're really not that far off at this point. We started much higher, and I'll get to that as well, but low-five and low-six, it's a difference of one unit per acre. The current land use designation, as I said, is commercial recreation, and this is an important tight line. As you know, we have been at this for a very long time, and we're at a point now where we, we're hopeful that, going back to the key terminology of up to 22 units, up to six units per acre, that we can move this process forward so that we can get into the things that everybody really wants to talk about, which is what does our site plan look like? Is our site plan compatible? Is our site plan something that you like? And I think those details are really important. But we started in July of 2018. As you know, we appeared before this board, and we made a commitment to this board that when we came back to you, we would come back with a lower density. And we did, we did do that. We heard from the Planning and Zoning Board, we heard from the commissioners, and we heard from the community that they wanted to see a lower density. So we've worked very hard on accommodating those requests, and maybe we don't have that exactly right, but again, as Michelle pointed out, this is the first step in a very long process, and in fact, this comes, this comes through the commission and then back to the commission, so a lot of conversations can happen between, between that time. As I said, we did start with 36 total townhome units. We, before, when we came before you last time, we dropped it down to 33, and we're now at 22 units, which is actually a mix of 20 townhome and two single-family. Again, we did not submit a revised site plan, that's just what we're thinking. Those are, again, details that have to come before this board and multiple other community, community associations. The, as you said, the site plan has to be reviewed by other boards at the city and the City Commission, so those are things that we know are open to discussion. But that does, that proposed mix does get us to the six units to the acre. This is just a survey, and here's what it looks like. As you can see, the majority of the site is remaining commercial recreation. I would like to point out, if we played with the num, if we played with the acreage, we actually probably could push the six units to the acre to five units to the acre. It's because we've drawn it the way we've drawn it, which we think is really important. We really strive to leave as much of this property as possible as commercial recreation because it's a club, and it's an asset for the community, and it's something that we feel strongly about. But the reality is, it's the way we draw the line that comes up with the number of units per acre. Right now, it's six. If I pushed that, you know, that line slightly up on both sides, I could probably get it to five, and then I could make the case that, you know, that at five, we're compatible. Still have to deal with the site plan, still have to come back to you with that, and still have to come back with the zoning. But, but we did draw, we drew the acreage for the land use plan as tight as we possibly could to leave as much as we possibly could as commercial recreation. So that's essentially just a slide that says exactly what I just said. And again, I know I've said it, Michelle said it, Mr. Gallo said it, the lupa does not vest the ultimate number of units. It does not allow us, it does not, it does not give us the right to demand them. It is something that can ultimately be decided by the public boards that vote on the site plan and the zoning. And Mr. Gallo used an example of another project that you recently considered that was entitled to a certain number of units, I think 16 was the number under the zoning, and ultimately, the site plan got you to 12. Because when you start putting in setbacks and height restrictions and all those other kinds of things, that's what your site plan ultimately looks like. And the land use plan amendment, under, under Florida law, does not entitle you to, if your, your land use can be significantly higher, it does not entitle you to that number of units. It's simply a framework to start a discussion. So this is just a breakdown. As I said, we tried to draw the land use plan amendment as tightly as we could, which is at 3.6856 acres. The site itself is, of course, much larger than that. Michelle's already gone through this, so I don't need to bore you with that, but again, our rezoning has not been submitted, our site plan has not been submitted. Those are things we still have to work on. Public facilities analysis, Michelle went through that already. Basically, what they say is that they all have capacity to serve. We actually had letters that said that the service capacity was available when we were at the higher number, now we're significantly lower. And we do think it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I will defer to Michelle, there are some sections that talk about, you know, the goal of being a single-home community, but there are some other provisions in the land use plan that we think we are in compliance with. For instance, the proposed amendment actually offers a residential land use and building type that maintains the suburban community character while addressing residents' demand for townhomes. There is a need for townhomes and for a mix of uses in a single-home community. Again, those are site plan details, things that need to be worked out in the future, but, but as it stands, you know that this is, we're looking at a mix of townhomes. At six units to the acre, the amendment proposes a residential land use that maintains the residential orientation, because again, the club, as it sits today, is a business zoning district on a commercial recreation land use. So you already have a use that is not single-family next to single-family, and we find this is a, this would be a nice transition. Again, this is really just, as it comes to policy 1.2.2, it talks about transition, and that's what I was just referring to. Again, we're at six units to the acre, there are no impacts to historic resources, and that's... There are no impacts to those dark resources, and that's essentially it. And I don't want to overstate, I do, again, want to thank this board, you have given it a tremendous amount of time. We have been in this process for a very, very long time. And we are very appreciative of the time and the effort and the research. Michelle and her staff have been really great to work with, and I think, you know, like I said, we know we have to come back before you with a zoning and a site plan, and maybe this is not exactly right or exactly what you're asking for, but we would ask that you let us move forward as this is the first step in the process, and there are many, many steps to go. I think, I think all of the things that we find that people really want to talk about is what does your site plan look like? What are your setbacks? What does your site plan look like? Those are details that we can't get to until we can move forward with this part of the process. As Michelle said, this is about a year, and we are at step one of a multi-step process. So with that, the entire team is here to answer questions. Thank you again, and we are very appreciative of your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. What I'd like to do is just open up for the board to ask questions of Stephanie and then go to public comment, if that's okay. So I think I started with you first again last time, so I won't do that this time. So Mark, questions of either Michelle or Stephanie?
If there's an impasse, if we say, okay, six per acre, and there's an impasse somewhere along the way where we don't want to do six per acre, but we've agreed to doing that with this change tonight that's being proposed, what happens?
Kevin, right. What you're being asked has been mentioned before. You're asked, you're being asked to make a recommendation to the City Commission with respect to amending the land use plan to provide for up to six units per acre.
Right.
So it depends upon what site plan comes forward as to, you know, assuming they can't go any more than six, if it's approved, they can't go any more than six units per acre, but what does, what does the site plan show? What does it meet as far as the land development standards? What's the compatibility with the surrounding area? And that's the determination that this board will have to consider if and when that site plan comes forward. So what you're doing tonight doesn't necessarily bind your hands with respect to any density of any future development.
But if we said five instead of six?
If you said, if you said five to nine instead of six, well, that would be, wait, the applicant has asked for six. If you want to make a recommendation as to a different amount, that would be your prerogative as a board.
Okay, but if we say six, then it doesn't, it doesn't commit the city to allowing six in the event that there's, there's not a, an agreement, future agreement around this.
Correct.
Yeah. So the key phrase is up to? So if we approve six, it's up to six. If you approve five, it's up to five. It can never be more, it could be lower.
And just again, this is a recommendation to the City Commission.
Yes. Everybody, I think, understands that this board only recommends to the higher authority of the City Commission.
Kind of like Hot Topic.
Yeah. Mark, any doubts?
Well, the surrounding area, the low five, that is in the surrounding area that you were talking about. So that's, that's like the single family density?
Well, we can bring that slide back up if you're confused about it, because I'd like everybody to be as understanding as possible.
If I can just respond to that while Ms. Toothaker looks for the slide. The land use designation surrounding is mixed. The actual development of what's surrounding is three units per acre to the east and west, five units to the acre to the south.
Right.
But the reality is it's single family.
It's single family detached.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Great.
Just to be clear on this, the LUPA itself does, would never allow a project to come in that's not, until it's zoned that way, a project can't come in without going through here or the commissioner or anyone else.
Yes. Because currently, as has been stated, there's an inherent inconsistency with respect to what the land use plan allows for as far as the designation and what the zoning code provides for. So they're going to have to come forward with the rezoning to make sure that that property is consistent.
And then once it's zoned, zoning would become before the site plan?
Correct.
Typically, yes.
So if it's zoned a certain way, then are we in a position of saying anything can come in there as long as it's within the zoning code without coming to us? Or the site plan still has to be approved?
Site plan is zoned regardless. Yes.
So if you could think of it as, once it's zoned?
The site plan still needs to come before this board for approval. Even if, you know, if the zoning is approved and the zoning is consistent with the land use plan, and what they're proposing in their site plan is consistent with the zoning, that site plan still needs to come before your board for approval.
If I could just, if I might interject too, most of you may know this, but I am, was a zoning and land use attorney.
Oh, really?
So I just wanted to point out that in many instances, cities would not necessarily go ahead and rezone the property without a site plan being processed at the same time. So we have a lot of protection there in terms of we would not typically approve a zoning district without the site plan being approved at the same time.
It's important to have zoned because the zoning district tells you what portion of the land development regulations to apply to the property. So if you look at the Code of Ordinances, each zone has a certain set of criteria, and they differ by zone. So you have to get a zoning designation in order to determine what criteria will govern the site plan and how it's judged.
And by law, the zoning district has to be consistent with the land use, so much as we've been talking about the various steps. First step is land use plan, then you get into rezoning and site plan approval.
Any questions of the applicant? Or Michelle?
The 3.6856 acre...
More or less.
More or less.
More or less, yeah.
That, is that including the marina? Because we're, I'm looking at gross acreage, it's 12.1. So everything.
So I can clarify that?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'd like you to do it.
So the entire yacht club site is 12.1. The area that they've carved out for the land use amendment is the 3.7...
3.7 acres.
3.6856, more or less, acres. And it doesn't include the marina. Now, that's a gross acreage, so we use the term gross acreage because it goes to the center line of the right spray, the center line of the waterways. And the point that Ms. Toothaker was making, when you look at units per acre, it becomes somewhat of a numbers game, if you will, because if they adjusted the size of the 3.6856, more or less, acres to extend up a little bit to make it a bigger area, your density, it's units per acre, so if your acreage gets bigger, your density gets less.
That was my question.
Yes.
And the commercial recreation proposed, the 8.4 acres there, that's the area that the yacht club is on now plus the marina? I mean, is, how much of this is water?
Can I help you with that? So it's important to understand that the gross acreage is comprised of upland, rights of way, and water. There are three components to that. And I think when I analyzed it, there was about nine, 12.1 acres of which 9.5 was uplands, 2.3 was water, and 0.3 was right of way up on 42nd.
Can you give that back to me again?
Of the 12.1 acres?
Yes.
9.5 acres is upland, upland being a term for land. 2.3 acres is water, and 0.3 acres of right of way, which is at sort of like the entrance to where the yacht club is now. Of the 3.6856 acres, about 1.1 acres is right of way and water, and 2.6, give or take some, is actual land we need to put in buildings. So...
Which is how gross acreage is always calculated. You count, you count submerged land as well as...
There's no shenanigans, there's no shenanigans there, that's the way it's done. That's just, but keep that picture in the head. And that's why when we get to site plan, it's so important because when you see the buildings on the property, you realize you don't really see the water, but when you're doing it this way, you count the water. Does that make sense?
Right.
That was my, that was my question.
I'm trying to make it as lay term.
And there's a specific language in the Broward County land use plan that that's the way you calculate. You include the right of way and whatever, so you're doing it the way they are supposed to calculate.
Any other questions, Ken?
No, that was my major, I, when you look at the...
Oh, I forgot, Mike.
When you look at all the pictures, it looks much bigger than it is. To me, the, where you have the black area that you're showing to the right, the black area to the, on the left, the low, medium density. What I'm afraid of for everybody looking at that is that it looks like, well, most of that is going to be yacht club. Half of that is, is water.
Well, not half.
Well, not half, but in the small portion.
But water, I mean, water is open space. It's view corridor, so to speak.
And of course, when we show our site plan, it won't look like that. This is just for land use purposes. When we show our site plan, you'll very clearly show what the upland portion is.
Right. Well, the upland is much more than what I thought it was to begin with.
I apologize, I didn't see the mic there.
Excited.
I was trying that.
Excited.
I always kept looking at Sherri, she's a nice girl.
Good move. The only question I have is maybe, actually, Bill, you could probably answer this question, but...
I feel like I should go home now.
Everybody can answer this question. The density is, the density is lower on the waterfront than on the drive up. Is that just because of the value of the property? Is there any functionality to that? Because these are going to be waterfront...
Going back.
These are going to be waterfront lots, which would, waterfront to waterfront would be three, not five. But is that just a function of how much it costs to buy a waterfront lot? Or is that, is there any...
Just the way it is.
Just the way it is. Okay. Just, just how it got developed.
I don't have any other questions.
So I'm going to go on the waterfront street, and down on the water is five. Can you speak into the mic?
Was that a question, Ken?
I'll just was clarifying.
Okay. Susan, do you have a question?
Um, yes. I have a question of Ms. Milgram. Because we have here in our staff report, and you've stated it on the record as well, that this is a recommendation of denial.
Correct.
And if the difference here, reading into what you're saying, are you saying that if this was, if they were asking for five, that, that would then make this all better because there's other fives in the area? Or what's behind? Because we know that, at least in reality, they're probably not going to get the 22 units that they have calculated as possible, and they have stated on the record that they know that they're not entitled to that number of units. So why the recommendation of denial?
And it's twofold. And I will state from the outset that I tend to be very conservative. Just my nature. It's twofold, though. One is, is that we're looking at compatibility with the surrounding densities. We have three on either side, but also, we have objectives in the comprehensive plan that talk about emphasis on preserving single family areas, and we know, even though we haven't seen a site plan, we know the whole analysis was done, and the application is predicated upon 20 town homes, not single family, single family detached, and two single family homes. So it's predicated on the combination of those two things. It's just a recommendation.
Are you saying that you have a problem with two single family and...
No.
The concept of mixing that?
No, it's not the mix and match within the site of the 20s town homes and the two single family. It's my concern of the town homes against the single family detached at flank site. Now, having said that, I'm going to say something else, too, which is not related to a land use amendment, but I have said this often, and Mr. Gallo is a very competent and I value your opinion, he's been doing that to me, architect, that when you get down to the site plan level, and I'm not supporting or refuting this, I'm just making a general statement from experience, that a bad design will illuminate density to no end, but if you have a really good design, you won't focus on the density, you can't see it. But that's not really a consideration in the land use amendment, but something that I think about, yeah.
So do you have concerns as our consulting planner with even the concept of town homes adjacent to the single family homes, or no?
When you look at the distribution of land uses throughout the City of Lighthouse Point, you don't really, I did not observe, and I looked at the map carefully, where we have town homes or multifamily against single family detached. There are pockets of it, but it's not anywhere proximate to this site.
Other than this site right now is commercial rec, correct, with a commercial zone. Which you probably don't see anyplace else in the city.
Well, that's absolutely true.
Okay. All right, that's...
One more question.
Ken, yes? Just the proposed land uses for the low to medium residential and then commercial recreation. Is there anything in the, in this land use that, in this, what they're proposing to do, that commercial recreation has to be the yacht? Is there anything tying them to actually, if this goes through, the way that it's proposed, is there anything tying that commercial recreational area to remaining the yacht club?
Well, the commercial recreation area that is what we know as the yacht club is not part, is not a consideration here. You're only looking for the residential at six units per acre.
Right. But there are other uses for commercial recreation, correct?
That is correct.
Which would give him, I don't know, I said, that would give them the opportunity to use that commercial recreation for whatever is allowable based on what, what gets passed. Most of the, the reason I'm stating this is most of the concerns that I've heard from citizens is that they're, they're very excited about a revan, a revitalized yacht club. Sure. Okay. A lot of them are willing to forgo certain ideas about the townhouses, stuff like that, as long as the yacht club itself is revitalized. Is there anything in this that would allow that not to happen?
There's, there's no assurance whatsoever, if you approve this, that that would happen. That's a representation that the applicant has made, but it's not a consideration for the land use. Correct.
And I can address that if...
Yeah, like the chair.
That's a question that we were asked a great deal when we submitted our very first application, and our very first application had a conceptual plan that was attached to it. And, and in the DRC and some of our discussions with the elected officials, that, that is a question that everyone wanted to know. We had discussed with them the possibility of tying certificates of occupancy to the ultimate residential, to a requirement that the club happen at a certain time. Those are site plan things that we, we would propose. We looked at some different options. We worked with some of our, some of the residential real estate attorneys in our firm to talk about how we could maybe make some proposals that would have to be vetted by your, by your city attorney. But those are representations that we are prepared to make at the appropriate time. And I would just state for you, and I don't, I apologize that I don't have it with me, but the commercial recreation land use doesn't permit a lot. Yacht club happens to be one of the, one of the uses that is permitted, and my guess is if I, because I know generally, land use in, in general, commercial recreation tends to be golf course, yacht club, tennis courts. It's not, we couldn't come in and build a hotel. That would not be permitted under the commercial recreation land use category. We couldn't come in with residential. We couldn't come in with a target, straight... Straight commercial uses are not permitted. In fact, most yacht clubs actually are land used, commercial recreation. That's a pretty and typically zoned park. That's a fairly common mix. But, and again, I will defer to your city on what's in your land use code, but there's not a lot of other uses that we could actually do without changing the land use.
There is one which that I probably should mention, because I know that you're aware of it. And that is the comprehensive plan says that a yacht club is indeed permitted in this land use category if it has a yacht club, would affect the yacht club zoning. So we need to fix that.
Which your city doesn't have. So that's one of the things, we're talking about helping the city proposing a change to your zoning code that creates a yacht club zoning, so your land is in your zoning would match.
Just to be clear, I'm not questioning Mr. Patterson or, or your intentions. I just, I want to be clear where Brad Lee is.
But under that designation, it could be Patterson Park.
It could.
Who would not be not?
It could be Gallo Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to add too much in the vein of what I said previously about how the rezoning and the site plan would go hand in hand. I know personally that I will want to see as part of those approvals, very concrete ties to the renovation or brand-new, whatever you want to call it yacht club. If I have the say in this, and I think most of us, I can't speak for anybody else, but I think we're all going to try to create the type of approval which will lock in those commitments.
And we really do appreciate that, because I think that that puts to rest any fears or questions that we had gotten from this board and from the commission. And we're prepared to have those discussions with the city attorney and the city, the city administrator, and make sure that we, we come to you with a proposal that hopefully will be acceptable to everybody.
And, and yeah, and we're prepared, depending on how things progress, to ensure that those benchmarks, those requirements, those conclusions are met in conjunction with the development.
And if, if the ownership changes, does that carry forward with the new orders?
Yes. So I, I have a quick, they're not letting me ask some questions. I have a question. So they're asking for six per acre, 20 townhomes, two single-family units. Does that give them the latitude to come back at some point in time and say, we changed our mind at site plan, we want 15 single-family homes?
Yeah, because the whole analysis was done on this development program.
So, so this is basically where the differentiation between a townhome and a single-family unit is going to be codified in this loop-up.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Because, I mean, a townhome is a fee simple product. It's essentially an attached single-family.
It's just dwelling in.
Right. It's just dwelling in.
That's what I was looking at.
So are we approving 22 dwelling units?
You're, you're approving up to six dwelling units per acre.
Per acre, but the analysis for the loop-up was predicated on the breakdown that they identified.
So, yeah, so my question really is, to you as planner, if they come back with 18 townhomes and four single-family units, where are we in the process?
And, and maybe I can defer to Ms. Toofer with respect to the, the dash line area for the purpose of developing the 22 residential units comprised of 20 townhouses and two single-family detached residential units, which is in the ordinance as proposed. Is that, you know, if that's changed, then in theory, the ordinance would need to be amended to provide for the difference.
That's what I was driving at. I mean, it's kind of sort of restrictive, but.
You know, and I, I thank you for the question, because, to be honest with you, and I, I know we, we have a lot of land use experts. My understanding of a land use plan amendment is it doesn't define the type of unit, it's just a dwelling, a dwelling unit. The ordinance is drafted, actually does define the type of unit.
And that was my question, because it's confusing me.
It is a good point.
That it's restrictive land use plan amendment. And if you deviate from that, we're back to the land use plan amendment, or at least an amendment to the land use plan amendment.
Right.
I, I don't think the land use plan amendment is going to be the issue. It's the fact that the ordinance specifies.
I agree.
That's the problem.
Because typically, you'll just have a land use plan amendment to change from this to that. But in this instance, as drafted, we have it to include those specific units. And if you're going to amend that, that would require an amendment to the ordinance.
And the only issue I would raise with that is that the whole application, which you're considering, is predicated on an analysis of impact of facilities and services on a particular unit mix of the 22 units. So in other words, single-family detached may have a greater impact than multifamily or townhouses. So I can't say one way or the other how that would affect.
I just want everybody to be clear what we're being asked to approve.
And I don't understand, Michelle, why that would ever have even been specified, because usually do the maximum.
That's the way the application was presented.
I don't think it was our intention to, to tie ourselves into a unit mix. It was our intention to do a number of units per acre.
Sorry, I brought that up.
No, I'm actually, I'm actually very pleased, and I thank you for doing it. I think we were maybe a little over, over-specific, because it might be that the, that the mix, you know, that ultimately comes out of a site plan discussion is different. I don't know, David, can we revise the ordinance? So it just refers to the number of units. And certainly, Michelle, we can, you know, through the process, we can revise the application. Yeah, we've got a lot of steps to go.
Well, I think the, the leeway here is tonight's a recommendation. So to the extent that this board wants to make a recommendation as to how they want this recommendation to go forth, whether it's to include that language in the ordinance or take it out, that could be part of your motion. And then ultimately, it will be up to the city commission to consider how that ordinance should read and be considered.
And, and the only other thing, I sort of wanted to build on just what, Susan, talk to that. Because I heard loud and clear during all of our town hall meetings, a concern of the public about the redevelopment of the club. So somewhere, somehow, either via development agreement, whatever you, you know, whatever we end up where we are, that's going to be some sort of baggage that's attached to this application. And frankly, I think it's fair, because you've built your whole case.
Yes.
Based upon, originally, Terry built his whole case based upon the financial feasibility of the project being dependent upon his ability to have residential. So the last thing we want to see is the residential and not the yacht club.
We agree.
Okay, so.
You do that through the loop-up?
No, I think this is not the time for that. I think that'll be done.
Typically, it's part of your site plan.
Yeah. So with that, I think we've had an opportunity to ask our questions. I'm sure that.
I have another question.
I'm sorry.
Michelle, in your, in your report, you said that the setback to the rear of the site is suffered from adjacent residential uses by tennis courts and boat docking areas. How is that, how does that play into the fact that, you know, this is all going to be townhomes right around the area that you have tennis courts now, where you're not seeing any of that?
Well, we changed that somewhat only because, when this first came in, we were really focused on the site plan that was submitted. And the application got rolled back to let's focus on the overall density. So we know that certain amenities that are there now would go away, but we really don't know how it's going to lay out, because we haven't seen a site plan. I mean, yes, we have, but it's not part of this application, so I can't refer to it. And I'd like to add.
They could change significantly.
Well, it could. I'd like to go back to one other thing that Ms. Motley brought up, and you were asking me about whether I had a fundamental problem with townhouses against single-family detached. And I want to clarify that. It's two different ways that I'm looking at it. So with my hat on as the consulting planner for the city of Lighthouse Point, I'm looking around at how the city has developed generally, as I refer to, and I don't see that we have pockets of this anywhere else. So this wouldn't be consistent with the development pattern within the city. I'm going to take that hat off and just put on my planning hat, separate and apart from the development patterns in Lighthouse Point. And from purely a design standpoint and urban planning, a logical transition from single-family detached would go to townhouse and then to something, I'm not suggesting it would be here, more dense, but it's, people allude to it as the wedding cake, the layer that goes up. And so from a professional standpoint, generally, no, I don't have a problem with it. Again, as the consultant planner for Lighthouse Point, I haven't seen that development pattern here. So it would be, I believe, unique. Does that clarify my position?
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
So we've been talking for a while. I'd like to give the members of the public an opportunity to either ask questions, state a preference, and if you're welcome to come on up, just give us your name and address, and have at it. And. Did no one hear?
I saw you last time. You had a hearing. Michelle, hi again.
Hello. Hi there.
I spoke to her on the phone and asked whether or not there was a site plan. And she said it's not about a site plan. So here I am again. I got to say.
Say your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name's Yale Goldberg. I live at 2500 Northeast 32nd Court, Lighthouse Point.
Thank you.
And I'm a little bit confused, and I don't like to be confused. We started out here about two months ago with a site plan. And the site plan, now we're talking about zoning. Now, the original site plan did or did not conform with zoning.
If I could, it was a conceptual site plan. There's never been a formal site plan submitted with respect to the development of the property.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That helps to de-confuse me. When I was here last, I spoke to you about trying to squeeze a size 11 foot into a size five shoe, if you remember. Well, I'm here again to talk about still a size five shoe. And I'm hearing that instead of trying to squeeze a size 11 shoe, a size 11 foot into a five, size five shoe, we're now trying to squeeze a size eight foot into a size five shoe. And I think that is something that you all have to think about and think about carefully, because you have terrible traffic problems, you have terrible parking problems on site without a site plan. Of course, we can't address them as to what the real problems are. But I am very concerned thus. And I have another question for you, and that is this combination of townhouse and residential, and, and single-family residential. Can it be any mixture? Can it be, say, six single-family residential properties and no townhouses? Or must it be some townhouses? Can you answer that, sir?
And that's, that's what we were just talking about. But currently, as requested, it's six dwelling units per acre. Whether that dwelling unit is a single-family home or a townhome, you know, each one counts for one. As proposed, the ordinance specifically has a designated mix of units, and that's what we are going to be looking into with respect to whether that language is going to remain or not remain in the ordinance.
Well, I understand what you said, obviously. But, you know, if they wanted to come in under this suggested zoning and build six luxury, single-family homes on that property, could they do it under that zoning?
So right now, we're just talking about land use. So it depends on what zoning category they're in as to what would be permitted.
Assuming the zoning.
We're just talking about numbers of dwelling units. We're not looking at what types necessary.
Maybe I could help, maybe I could help answer this question. The application that the applicant's made says that they're asking for 22 dwelling units within the circumscribed dash line area, proposed to be comprised of 20 townhomes and two single-family detached units.
I understand that.
That's what they're applying.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I understand what they've applied for, but I got the suggestion that that could vary substantially. That, that there could be fewer townhouses and more single-family houses.
As my interpretation, the applicant has asked for this. If this is what's approved, that's what they're stuck with. If they want to change that, they could ask, once they're approved, to amend it. And then they'd have to change it again. But right now, that's what they're asking for.
Well, if that is what they're asking for, I go back to what I said at the outset. I think, again, even with 22 townhouses, you're trying to squeeze a size eight foot into a size five shoe. And there's little doubt in my mind about that. Now, I want to question one other thing. And that was the suggestion, I think, you were the one who made it, about the tying in of this development with rebuilding of the yacht club. And I got the impression that somehow or another, these are going to be tied together as they, as was suggested at the last meeting that we had. And I made a suggestion at that meeting, and I make it again. And that is, if they are tied together, that there be a performance bond. It's one thing, with no disrespect to Mr. Peterson, who I think is a great guy, wonderful guy. But money talks and something else walks. And I have a hard time, very candidly, trying to reach the economics of this whole business. I have a very difficult time. And that's why I'm saying to you, if indeed you intend to tie the rebuilding of the yacht club together with the granting of something, in terms of townhouses, or whatever you do, it's imperative that there be a performance bond attached to it to assure that the city of Lighthouse Point will get the new yacht club that we all like to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, thank you, counsel, for your time. My name is Kevin Brown. My address is 2366 Northeast 29th Street, Lighthouse Point, Florida. And I just want to say that I want you to approve this amendment. I think anything that is development, that helps grow and make new buildings and new shiny things, helps attract more families, helps make our community a better place. I am a member of the yacht club, and I've seen Terry, what he's done to the place since he's been there. He's very engaged. He sincerely wants to improve things. And considering all the checks and balances you have to go through, and there's still a site plan that I'm sure will clarify everybody's intentions of number of units of this and how big of that, and how far is this away from that, I think let's give Terry the opportunity to get there. And I highly recommend you guys approve this amendment, because I think it'll help bring families here and make Lighthouse Point a better place. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Kino Burdwell, 1010, northeast 31st Avenue. And I've been a member of the. And I've been a member of the yacht club for about six years, and I've been a member of the community for about seven years. And I've seen what Terry has done to the yacht club, and to tell you the truth, when I heard about this project, I was very excited about it. I live basic, my house is basically a block away, and I just got my new property taxes, which is about $60,000 a year, so this could greatly affect me. And I'm excited for this project, and I hope you guys decide to let it go to the next step.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I want to tell you that I always get Gino's UPS packages in my house. Anyone else?
I'm Kevin Russell, 4411, northeast 25th Avenue. Thanks for having me talk to you. Did a little research and saw that federal housing administration says the average lifespan of a wood and drywall structure is 30 to 50 years. Appears that the Lighthouse Point Yacht Club was developed in 1960, making it 59 years, so nine years past its reasonable lifespan. And so, I think it's not a matter of if, but when. And if we didn't have a young buck from South Africa coming wanting to do this development, it may be having a very different cock. That's whether we should condemn building. So, I would highly recommend we move forward in the development. We have to do the practical, human thing. There's economics. Naturally, Terry wants to take the role of the revenue from the sale of the residential properties into the yacht club due to development. It's a practical matter. And I suggest, rather than crafting the project around the regulations, we craft the regulations around the desires of the people and what's best for the community.
Good evening. My name is Michael Holmes, 2242, northeast 26th Street in Lighthouse Point. I am a member of the club, okay? Proud member of the club. But this isn't about the club, okay? It's about our entire community. This club is interwoven in this community, in its entire history. It touches more than just the members that are here. It touches thousands and thousands of people all year long. Now, I don't really know of this board who has done an absolute great job. I can tell you I've spent a lot of time looking at this, but there's so much, okay? So, I just want to give you a little quick rundown here, okay? Of the local philanthropics, this club supports the Honor Flight of South Florida, Arc Culinary, Arc Educators, Team of Life Center, the Renad Foundation, the events and organizations that go through this club through the years, the Lighthouse Point Keeper Day, Taste of Lighthouse Point, Serotimus, the Broward County Chiefs of Police, Lighthouse Point Saltwater Fishermen, the Pompano Exchange Club, the Lighthouse Point Women's Club, the Pompano Women's Club, the Pilots Club, the Hillsborough Sailing Club. I could go on and on just about these clubs. You think about the schools and the community that the club supports, okay? You've got the Lighthouse Point Christian School, the St. Gabriel, St. Martin's, the Atlantic Tech, South Florida Bible School, the Northeast Book Trinity School. The churches use it for their, when they don't have a facility large enough to support it. And you go into the business, the businesses are discounts, and these aren't large dollars that are coming to the club. These are small pieces that help it, okay? But the club is just an intricate part. I mean, I had my wife's 50th birthday party there. I'm sure there's many people here in the club here that'll probably use it for weddings and anniversaries. And I just bring this, I just bring this to your attention because the club's been in a downhill spiral for years, okay? The prior ownership couldn't figure this out. They were letting it deteriorate, as the gentleman just mentioned, okay? It has not been upgraded. We are city, even looked at trying to figure this out years ago, potentially looking at an acquisition, and we couldn't figure it out at that point in time. Terry comes along, he's put a half-million-dollar facelift on this thing just to keep it moving, but he's got a plan that no one else has been able to do to renovate this thing. A lot of times when people come to this club, it's the first vision they see of our great city. And his vision is to try and get it a little bit larger, okay? And if it takes 22 homes instead of 18, I would like you to try and support, basically, those requirements around a few tweaks in the zoning, if that's what it takes, okay? I understand that y'all are trying to find ways to make this happen. I would just like to see you guys support this effort. Terry gives his everything. I don't think we could ask, as a city, to get a better potential owner who puts his, gets his blood and tears into this. He's at that club all the time supporting it, okay? It's not just about the club with Terry, it's about our city. I would ask you to support him and these 22 units. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have no doubt.
Leo Bentz, 3000 Northeast 31st Avenue. I have here a copy of a letter that I emailed to all of you. Only Monday, I'm sorry, a little late. I also emailed it to the entire city commission. I also emailed it to the mayor and our city administrator, and I emailed it to a bunch of my friends. So, in reference to the question, if I'm violating something, I'm sorry. But my letter didn't ask for any answers. I don't, I didn't encourage any crosstalk, and hopefully, I'm not going to go to jail. Now, just to start, if I may, I said first, let me remind you that your, at your December 4th meeting, our city zoning director recommended denial of any townhouses based upon the fact that this property is surrounded on the north, south, east, and west. Those are all the directions by single-family homes. In fact, if a vote had been taken at the last meeting, I think this project would have been denied. I hope I'm not wrong in that. Now, if this developer would actually build the proposed new clubhouse, new swimming pools, the dog promenade first, changing the land use plan on a portion of this property would be much more of a rewarding decision. Now, at this point, all this board will have is a verbal promise. Now, I've heard a lot of people say, no, we want a definite fact, so I understand that. But so far, all you've seen is a verbal promise. How can this board be assured that Patterson would actually build these two single-family homes as verbally promised? If a year or so from now Patterson said, I can't afford to build those single-family homes, I am only going to build townhouses instead, what could the city do? The land use has now changed. Because I think the land use, once it's enacted, it's enacted, and I don't know what conditions you can put on it. Now, let me suggest a possible reality for anyone who trusts developers' verbal promises. Those of us who have lived, practiced law, architecture, and have been contractors in South Florida for many years know that the local, state, and nationwide development cycles change. Even most of you remember the major recessions in 2008. For the benefit of some who don't know me, I am 94 years old. I have lived in South Florida, Miami, and Fort Lauderdale, Lighthouse Point for the past 50 years. I've seen a lot of what we're talking about tonight. Now, assume a similar recession in 2020. Patterson should default on his second mortgage. The second mortgage holder would foreclose and most likely wind up owning the entire yacht club property, or there could be another buyer at the foreclosure sale. The southern part of this property would, by your actions today, have been land use-designated multifamily, low-medium residential. The new owner of this property would not be legally obligated to build any single-family homes or build a new clubhouse. In fact, this new owner would have legal basis to demand or to ask that all the remaining yacht club property be land use-designated multifamily or low-medium residential, whatever that may mean. Haven't seen a definition. I'm not good on acres, forgive me. In addition, from the legal standpoint, when the city downzones the land use or the zoning on one piece of property, the adjoining and adjacent landowners now have a non-self-imposed hardship to have the zoning on their property changed. This is why neighborhoods deteriorate. If I owned a home on 42nd Street, and now I'm looking at townhouses and whatever might be, and a yacht club that's failed, I would be asking, can I build townhouses on my house by the adjoining lots? Let me suggest another idea. Assuming that some members of this board may wish to grant this developer a combination of his requests. Remember back the year to the Gadachi Townhouse Project on 39th and Lighthouse Drive? The zoning board overcame some 28 variances by recommending the conditional use concept to the city's commission. A possible application might be to recommend that this entire 3.6 acres, south portion of the land, be designated single-family the entire site. Thereafter, each new townhouse would be permitted, one by one, as a conditional use. The condition for each requested townhouse being that the profit, to be defined later, on each single-family home and each townhouse sold, be held in escrow and ultimately be used to build the new streets, pools, promenade dock, and hopefully, a new clubhouse. As an alternative idea would be to require that this developer replat this entire nine-acre site in accordance with our code and commission directions to be determined. This would need creating a form of site plan with the replat, similar to what we have seen simultaneously with changes to land use. That way, the developer would have to dedicate or use deed restrictions for the pools, the roads, promenade, parking, and other amenities that are being promised to the new buyers of these homes and townhouses. The city could designate two specific 100-by-100-foot single-family lots for two new canal-front homes at the southern border and designate two other areas for the townhouses. Note on the attached zoning maps, which I don't have with me, but I sent to you. There are, our zoning map has 12 categories of zoning, and the comprehensive plan, which we're talking about right now, has seven categories of zoning, and some of those category definitions are different. Since the comprehensive plan map controls, why does the city have a zoning map? The concept that plan use controls over zoning is somewhat new to me, and I presume new to maybe many of you board members. If any of my statements or opinions here are incorrect or legally wrong, I would hope that our city attorney would correct them. Now, I'm in favor of all of the people, of course, who stood up here like myself and said, we want a clubhouse. But how can you assure that clubhouse?
Thank you, Leo.
Was that, Leo, was there a question for the attorney at the end of your-
rhetorical question.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
I'm John, John Sammons. I live at 4200 Northeast 27th Avenue. And I appreciate that, being a neighbor of the yacht club, their future is important to me and to my part. And so, I'm in favor of their success. I hope it thrives. But I think we need to ask why Michelle wants to, has recommended you deny this land use change. I think she has some pretty good reasons. It's a laudable goal to have a new clubhouse, and it's good for the community, I can see that. But what's the price? We're going to have townhouses right smack in the middle of what is single-family housing, and it's going to change the character of Lighthouse Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on forward.
My name is Sammy Salem, 2810, northeast 42nd Street, Lighthouse Point, Florida. I live right across the street from the proposed development. I'm just going to be brief, speaking snippets. Honestly, I'm exhausted. I can't spend time with my daughter, so I'm trying to get everybody out of here.
If you could speak a little louder into the mic-
Yes, I can, I can try. Just to be clear, I'm in favor for the development. I live right across the street, so it'd be silly if I wasn't in favor of something, right? I stand to benefit. But what I have to be cautious about is how it's developed because it affects me. I have to make sure that the development abides by local codes, life safety, which I understand that really isn't part of this application, but I still have to be weary of it. We've talked a lot about the history of this project and how it's moved forward. There's been many meetings and recommendations. I've been a part of all of them. At least, I tried to be present at all of them, and I've heard countless recommendations made by the city commission to the, or the planning zoning to the applicant. In my opinion, none were adhered to. In fact, I kept seeing 33 or bust everywhere I went. All of a sudden, we've come down to 22. So, I think a lot of the sentiment today from a lot of the folks that spoken is, you hear performance bond. Well, that kind of plays into it, right? So, what happened? 33, 33 or bust. Oh, okay, well, now we want up to 22. I'm just going to put that out there so everybody knows. By the way, they're still, I think, considered over the density, right, by double, even with the up to 22? If the developer wants to change land use, so be it. But, I mean, do we have to attach a number to it? I don't know if that's a legal question. I don't know if the land use has to have a specific unit number attached to it, but why doesn't have a number at all?
It does.
He's, in the past, he's shown us site plans, or concept plans, rather. They weren't officially submitted. So, now, he's kind of taken a new approach, right? The new approach is, hey, let's break this up in pieces. Well, I think that's kind of dealing in bad faith. You've already seen the concept. You've already introduced it to the city. You've had townhome meetings. You've been at this for a year and a half. Show us your idea. Show us another concept. I think someone mentioned here on this board, I think every, they've never seen a zoning application without a site plan, I think someone said. Why not show us the site plan? Obviously, you have up to 22. You have an idea. You've shown us it before. Why not show it again? I think, I don't think that's too much to ask. Kind of seems like there's like a foot-in-the-door approach. You kind of hear in a lot of people's language, just get us through this part. Let us, just get us through this part. Just get us through this part. Sounds like I'm on Broadway. I'm on my hands and my knees. Staff report, you know, they recommended denial, and they didn't comply, again, with a bunch of topics. What were they? The goals. Goal 1.0, goal 1.2, 1.22, 1.44. All of those don't comply, so obviously, there was a reason for denial, I'm assuming, there. Again, we're seeing that trend of non-compliance. Taboo, I don't think anyone's even mentioned this, we've requested, or the staff has requested of the applicant, the traffic study since November for my street, the street that we're on, and he hasn't submitted that. I haven't even seen the little ropes, right, that even do that. So, he doesn't have an intention of doing that. I'm just curious as to why. I don't know if it matters. It probably doesn't, but it's a fact, right? We've requested it, and it hasn't been submitted. I don't think that's very fair. And then a couple of other notes of, while we were- And then, a couple of other notes of, while we were, we're all waiting over there. It's thirty-three or bust, foot-in-the-door approach, traffic study, I hit that. The number you guys answered for me. No, I think that's it. I think I hit every topic that I wanted to hit. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate the, all the hard work that everyone's put into it, including the applicant. He's really trying hard. I'm in the business, and I know the tricks, and I know the trades. But you guys will decide, and I'm sure you'll do what's right for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Going once. Ah, I think I know this lady.
Cindy Mano, Twenty-Seven-O-One Northeast Forty-Second Street. I spent half of my waking life there. I'm the bartender there. These are my people. I'm very emotional about this. I must feel like you want to deny him before he even gets out the gate. And since he's been there, I remember the day he walked in, and he didn't know all that was there. He just came to look at a marina. But I was standing right there, and I met him the first day. And, you know, he took over, and he's so kind, he didn't have to give us benefits, but he did. He didn't have to let me keep my twelve-year seniority, but he did. He didn't have to offer me a 401K, but he did. I had three years accrued vacation. Did he let me keep that? Well, yes, he did. He plans to stay in this neighborhood, retire here with his family, and hand this business down to his children. You think he's gonna disrespect all of that and all of you? I don't think so. Because what I've seen since he's taken over, as a man who cares very deeply for the eighty-five-plus people who are employed by him, who he's done the same thing that he's done with me. Treats us with respect and kindness and a very deserving, you know, group of people that this community has come to love. You know, I see these people, you know, five days a week, three days a week, I watch their families grow, the tellys. Here was this babe. Now she's eighteen, she's driving and all that. I mean, I watched them get married, then their children get married there. They bring their grandchildren. I mean, my car ladies. Every Wednesday, I think about going to work, and they're all tight. You know, I come to work with a big smile on my face, because I'm happy to be there. But those ladies mean so much to me. Every Wednesday, when I go into work after being off for the weekend, and I'm happy to go there, to be with them, to be with you, to be with everybody who's a member there in this community. And as for the townhouses, okay, let's talk about that. Would you rather look at some ratty tennis courts, or would you rather look at some beautiful landscaping that is the buffer in between the townhouses? Okay? I'd rather look at beautiful foliage. Let's talk about traffic. You think a thousand cars are gonna drop out of the sky? No, they're not. It's gonna be the same thing that's been going on for the last twelve years, the same groups, all these community events. It's the same amount of people. It's been going on for twelve years. What's the difference? There isn't. It's gonna be the same business running out of there. The people who live there in the townhomes or the homes, you think they're gonna go anywhere? Because we have the best game in town. We've got the pool forum, we've got the patios forum, we've got the food forum, and I love the alcohol forum. And I'm really good at what I do. So, they don't need anything other than us and what Terry's gonna create for us. And you notice that most of the people that are excited about it like me, you know, they're young, they're fresh, they have all these families. They're gonna raise those families there. Those kids are gonna get married there. They're gonna have grandchildren, their baby showers, their weddings, their birthdays, everything. They come from us. Anyway, that's my passion. I love you, Terry. And Leo, I love you too.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna take a two-minute break. Oh, I'm sorry.
You just get a feel here that there's a lot of--
Excuse me. Michael Home?
You need to add a chair if you can speak, and then you also need to make an amendment for that.
You've already had an opportunity. You've got three minutes, but go ahead, because we have a member that needs you.
Thank you very much. Michael Home, Two-Two-Four-Two, Northeast Twenty-Six Street, Lighthouse Point. It seems like there's a lot of folks here supporting this. Could I ask everybody here to support Terry's statement, please? And I did not send you guys emails today.
Terry. Thanks. And I appreciate all the comments, and I know what we're talking about. But it's our job. We have a law that governs our land. We have a law that governs our state. We have a state that governs our comprehensive plan. We have a county that governs how we use our land. We have the zoning ordinance that governs how we develop that property. Listen, I know Terry. I go to the yacht club. I know Cindy pours me Basil Hayden's and makes me smile. But in the end, we have to do this properly, and everyone needs to understand that. It takes time, it takes commitment, and we have to let everyone have their say. So, I appreciate all the comments, and I think most of us probably up here would agree with those comments, but we have to do the process. So please let us do our job, and please understand that it's a process that we have to go through. So, if there's no other comments from the public, Michelle, do you have any comments?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up for board discussion, and, well, we have a member that left, and I don't know whether, does anyone else on the board need a five-minute break, or? Okay, we'll wait for Susan to come back. I'd like to try and move this along so we can get recommendations of the board. Mike, I'm gonna start with you.
The only comment I have is, I was also interested in the traffic at last meeting, and I was disappointed that, you know, the local traffic, I don't really care about Dixie Highway, Sample Road. I'd like to see how it's gonna affect the neighborhood, so that would be very important for me.
Is that, Michelle? That's something that'll eventually be requested, the site plan?
It was a request that came from the city administrator. I believe it was back in November. With the latest resubmission of the application in February, I did not see it had been addressed or the information provided as requested. It's not something that's required under the land use ten amendment process because of the nature of that street, but it was a request made by the city that's not been addressed.
Any other comments? Kenton, I know you're not voting, but give me an opportunity to participate.
No, the only, I guess, the only question I had was with the wording of the ordinance, whether that was gonna be discussed to remove the way it is, with the townhouses and ours, whether they wanted, whether they wanted the opportunity to do that or not. I think we've all got the same, the same feeling up here, and this is what we're looking at tonight, but is this limiting them, or is this not limiting them? Is this what we have?
I just wanted to bring that up for clarification of the applicant, but their application is clearly for what the ordinance says in the application. So, you know, I'd like to get our comments focused on what they're asking for, which is six dwelling units per acre, twenty single-family homes, twenty townhouses, two single-family homes. That wasn't Freudian. And what our opinion is of that application.
Along that line, I would wanna know, for purposes of the report that was submitted, were the impacts assessed, this revised report assessed based on twenty townhouses and two single-family? Because my understanding of a land use plan is you're supposed to address the maximum impacts based on the number of dwelling units in the acreage.
That's correct, but it was, it was broken down.
What was broken down?
I'm sorry, the unit mix was broken down for twenty townhouses, two.
So they were limiting what they were wanting to do to that? I'd like to hear from the applicant as to why it was done that way, and do you wanna stay with that?
Thank you for asking the question. So I think it was, let me respond to the first thing. It would be our preference and probably preferable from just planning perspectives for this to just be six units to the acre. And it would not be our intention to put this limiting language in it, because we have to go through a site plan process, and a lot of those details need to be worked out. I believe what, if that's okay, if that would be okay to change that before it goes to city commission to take out the specificity on the type of unit and just make it units.
But wouldn't that then, the actual study that was done will have to be revised as well?
It would have to be revised, but I will say this. When the application came in before for, refresh my memory, how many units was it?
Right, so that's what I was about to say. We were originally at thirty-six units, and we met capacity for thirty-six units total. When we revised, I believe it's really only the traffic analysis that specifies the unit, the unit type and not the water and sewer capacity, school board, those kinds of things.
But you could submit or revise.
We'll revise it. We will revise that.
And I think the school board does, but I got a capacity letter today from the applicant, and schools are at like, not even eighty percent capac, there's not an issue with schools.
But we will revise, we will revise it based on more of a land use principle, which is six units to the acre, as opposed to the breakdown of townhome and single-family, if you would allow us to do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure procedurally, David. We have an application for twenty-plus-two, we have an ordinance for twenty-plus-two, and we have a series of impact reports for twenty-plus-two. How could we then?
Well, I think that, you know, if it's your recommendation to move this forward with a recommendation of transmittal subject to, and if that's to revise the language to remove that limitation, that's something that you could do.
And revise the report.
And condition that the report be revised and that prior to city commission consideration, all those steps be taken, I think that would be within your authority to do so.
Thank you.
Susan, any other? Mark?
Yeah, I--
And feel free to, you know, state your opinion, it's fine.
Okay. The map that was up there that showed the surrounding L-three right around it, and then L-five outside of that, and right smack in the middle, we're talking about six multifamily. And it really makes me uncomfortable that, you know, we're putting in the middle of this neighborhood something this dense. I think it makes sense to allow for development there, but the whole issue of up to six per acre, and oh, we can control it when we do the site plan. I would feel more comfortable having a cap, a restriction going into the site plan process of L-five residential low, which are the surrounding area.
So you'd be more comfortable with a density that meets the maximum density of the surrounding area?
Correct.
Okay. It's fair. Make our planner happy.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at, you look at the goals and the city goals on the comprehensive plan, and, you know, to me, it's very clear that putting something very dense like we're looking at putting here basically doesn't conform to those goals.
Question I have for, recognizing early on that we decide to describe this as a numbers game, would, if this application were approved at five, do they then have the latitude to come back and revise the dash line to justify the twenty-plus-two?
So I understand your, let me rephrase what I think I heard you say to make sure I understand. If they took the land area that has been circumscribed for the land use amendment and enlarged it, is that what you're suggesting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Then they would have five units to the acre. So I guess--
But do they have to come back through this process?
They would have to come back through the process again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I agree with Mark a lot of his comments, and I, you know, I guess I'm mixed on this. If we were going from multifamily to commercial, there'd be an uproar about it. You know, so we're going from a commercial to a multi, and although there's not a lot of that in the area, to, I think Michelle's and Susan's point, it doesn't mean it's wrong, and the transition could be done nicely. Bill's a great architect, and those kinds of things can be accomplished. And we're going to have the op, I'm not saying use, but, yeah, we are gonna have the opportunity to see a site plan. I do agree with Mark. I mean, we are doing this, and for everyone out there in our board, you have to separate the financials. From our perspective, you know, a lot of the emails that we received today kind of demanded, "You gotta prove why you can't give twenty to you." That's not our objective. We don't have to prove anything because of how it's currently zoned at the time. So we're looking at this loophole, we're trying to do what's best for everybody. We're saying around the whole community, not just the yacht club members, how could this work out for everyone? I agree that it shouldn't be over what the surrounding capacity is or the surrounding zoning is. So, you know, I was thinking earlier, maybe it should be four. It's a somewhat arbitrary number, I realize, but I think if we go with five and have the ability to, you know, still look at the site plan and make sure the transition was good. I know these two homes are in there, they could be important, but if the landscaping's there, I'm not sure how much of a buffer zone it is. I'd be a little bit more comfortable with that, but I do think this idea of the transition is, it's not a bad thing. We're, you know, part of this is we're trying to upgrade the city and do the right thing, and it could be done beautifully if it's done right. I'm sure that's Mr. Patterson's objective, he doesn't want a big ugly project. So I think the development idea is okay. Everyone's concerns about the financials and tying in the club would come at a later date. Am I correct on that? I mean, everyone's, there have been some few voicing concerns about the club not getting built, and that might happen, but we're just looking at this U-shape and saying, can it be residential, and if so, what could be, what would the impact be potentially? So, again, that's, I guess, my input on that, so that U-shape, you know, up to five, in my opinion, would be acceptable.
To your point about, we hear the community loud and clear, the concern that the club does get redeveloped, we want Cindy to have a job adding some items. How, what we've been hearing from residents is the mechanics of how they want to do that, but there's a lot of ways that that could be accomplished. More than had been mentioned here tonight, so we just wanna keep it at the high level of, whatever we do at some point in time, we will have to have some mechanism in place via development agreement or whatever. Somebody mentioned a full payment performance bond or something. A little difficult to regulate, but the mechanics will assume that we'll subject to some later process of approval. So, I think I'm hearing that the left side of the room for the audience, the right side of the room for the dais, is kind of leaning toward a five-unit per acre. Is that something comfortable? Yes, Susan?
Yeah. I would actually support the six, but the five makes me more comfortable. And the reason that I would have supported the six is that I don't think it's gonna get the number, the maximum number of units anyway. It just doesn't work that way in terms of, remember, they've got parking issues, they've got to provide for a lot of other facilities. I don't think it's gonna happen, but if it is the pleasure of our board that it be five rather than six, I will certainly support it. And I think the concern about the townhomes is probably not well-taken in the sense that this property, the die was cast many years ago when the yacht club was built. It is basically a commercial venture in the middle of single-family homes. And to take away some of the tennis courts and add what I think will have to be extremely attractive, lovely homes, whether they be single-family or townhome, I think will benefit everyone. And the improvement to the yacht club will happen. We have already many times had issues come up, all of you concerned about that. Believe me, everyone in the city is concerned about it, and much as our chair, Bill Gallo, said, there are many ways to do this, and it's done all-- And it's done all the time in lots of cities and communities. We can do it and it will be done, but this is not the time and place to do it. This is a land use plan amendment. So, um, in conclusion, I would support five or six because I think it's time to move on.
Mike, any comment on density?
Well, you know, well, first let me thank, hey, we have great people on this for my benefit. You guys have a lot of experience in this area, it helps me sort through this. And I agree with what Susan just said, but I think we should give ourselves the credit that we can deny later. And if we approve five and it turns out that we're going to have to come back and amend to six, I mean, we can, we can make it five later. We don't, so I would be in favor of keeping the ball rolling and approving it as is. And also, I would be in favor of having more abstract language in the ordinance so we're not stuck with the procedural yin yang of going back and forth. In other words, instead of having it be 20 and two, just have it be density. And because we're going to have the right to reject it later.
Yeah, and I remember I used that example very early on tonight of the project down the street.
Mm-hmm. It just doesn't happen.
If you applied that ratio here, if he, you know, I don't know what 75% of 20 and two is, but you can't do that math.
And if I might just clarify, I believe the applicant has already agreed that they want to eliminate that language, correct? So, that would be part of what we would be doing as well.
So, I think we've heard everybody on the board. Does anyone here want to make a motion?
Can I just, one more?
Yes.
Um, I was speaking about the language when we first talked because I was confused on whether that was even able to be done tonight, but as far as the, what Susan was talking about and Mike, um, five or six, to me, would be either one because we have the final say-so when it comes down to the end, as you mentioned before. And as far as townhomes go, as opposed to single-family, I think there's many ways that they can look nice. If you think about different areas, not that particular area, but if you think over by the yacht basin, if you think of different, different sites, Lighthouse Point, there's beautiful single-family homes right on the, not that million-dollar homes, right on the intercoastal and right down the way is, is condos and townhouses and it just depends on how we allow it to be, we have the say on how, how it's going to look and how it's going to come out, so.
In my world, you could conform to zoning and put up an ugly product, trust me.
Right, sure.
We see it all the time, so. Um, but we have a shot at that and, and just recognize that our government, our local government has a vehicle to assess all of these things. We have the site plan approval process, we have a fine community appearance board that takes account of aesthetics and materials and colors and compatibility, so we'll, you know, we'll have our shots at this developer numerous times before he gets, gets, gets to go and collects the $200 to go to the club with. So, um, that being said, can I get a motion because pretty soon I have to go to bed?
You want to challenge everyone?
You don't know what was said in her mouth.
I'll take a shot today.
Okay.
I move that we approve the request amending the proposed ordinance to eliminate the restriction of 20 townhouses and two single-family homes to just the density of six per acre.
Okay, so let me clarify. So, the way that David mentioned that that should happen is that we would make that recommendation subject to their changing the submission application when they get to the commission. Is that correct?
So, if I heard Mr. Cohen correctly, his motion is a recommendation of approval of the ordinance as presented with the revisions to the limiting language related to the townhomes and the single-family homes and the additional condition that the report be revised to reflect the change in that language.
Yes.
Prior to city commission consideration.
Per, per your recommendation.
That's your motion, Mr. Cohen?
You said it exactly the way I should have said it.
I never want to put words in your mouth.
I will second that much.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Is there any other discussion based upon the motion in the second?
The only other discussion I was, I am interested in the traffic. I don't know, can we condition upon getting a local traffic?
So, you could, we could add that you want to have the, that traffic that's been asked for be submitted with the package at the commission level.
And, and I guess, Ms. Motley, since you seconded the motion, would you agree to make that part of it?
I do, yes.
All right. And I don't know if you want to go from the applicant or not.
Yeah, are you okay with the conditions and the-
We've actually already prepared the report that you asked for, it just took us some time and unfortunately, we didn't have time to get it to Michelle, but it's been done, so we're happy for that to be a part of the motion because we will submit it in the coming days.
I did see the tapes in the street, so I must have tripped over them. So, um, motion to second, Sherri?
I'm assuming it's for both keys, 18, 18, and 18, 19.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And it's a matter of that vote.
Michael Cohen?
My favorite.
Mark Mackey?
No.
Susan Motley?
Yes.
Brad McLean?
Yes.
Bill Gallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Give him that.
Prove.
Thank you.
Bill? Wait, 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 Bill. Bill? Bill? I know, wait, we're not done. Wait, wait, wait. We're not done. You got a couple more. I know. We're not, no, no, no. Yeah, please. Okay. Still have, uh-
I should go very quick.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know everybody's happy that we finished our case, but we're not done. We have to-
Isn't that mine or yours? That's yours. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know where mine is.
Item seven, any public requests from the floor? Can we close that door, please? No public requests from the floor? Our zoning officials report?
I have not, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good.
Our city attorneys report?
I think I've spoken enough. I didn't say, it's always great to be here in the city of Lighthouse Point. And I did swim at the yacht club when I was six years old.
I know, she forgot to mention cotillion. Um, anything any of the members of the board want to bring up? I want to remind you that our chair made a recommendation that we do some work on our sunshine and that we also have furthered the conversation about vehicles and progress.
I have one other thing that I wanted to bring up. Is there any interest in having our meetings start a little earlier? I, I don't know whether for some people that's a problem, but almost all cities, I mean, most meetings start six, six-thirty, maybe seven, but seven, I, I know we had everything at 7:30, but I know the commission now meets earlier and I don't know about the appearance board, but-
I would be great because I'm a late dinner person, but, so, I'd like to eat dinner like around 8:30 or 9:00, but-
Yeah, I thought, I have spoken to Dennis about it because I thought maybe he, because he works downtown Fort Lauderdale, but he said he had no problem. So, maybe we could discuss that at our next meeting.
Maybe at our next meeting, okay. And I don't know what it would take to do that. Is that an ordinance change?
Well, we'll just double-check, make sure there's no pending or current resolutions or anything that may govern it, but we'll bring it back to your next meeting for further discussion. Oh, good. You have your mayor.
You can put it on the agenda for the next meeting if you'd like and take a vote on it and your choice starts 6:30 or 7:30. So, you either conform with the old schedule or with what the commission meetings are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's, uh, no further discussion.
One clarification, if we get a text from somebody, even if it's not exactly on something that we're doing, should we forward it to the city clerk?
I have in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's related to something that's either pending before or could procedably come before you, the safest thing would be to forward it to the city clerk.
I, I take a screenshot and, you know.
Okay. I don't have the city phone, so 18, 46.
No, but I was told to send it to Jennifer.
City clerk. Yeah, it was city clerk or Sherri, whoever, they'll keep the records.
Okay.
So, our emails that I got last couple-
So, yeah, we got a-
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get a clarification on that because-
Yeah, but we got a slew of emails today.
So, there is approximately, there was approximately 15 emails that were forwarded to me that were given from Michelle that I had on the deists for you that I have already received. Did you receive something different than the ones I gave you?
Well, Jerry, give me a break. I don't want to sit down and try and compare the 30 I have before you gave me.
Yeah, thank you.
I've already spent enough time on it, so.
But I might recognize names.
Can I just, is it your recommendation that we forward those emails to the city clerk?
I'm assuming that the emails or the texts related to the yacht club item and they may have contained substantive facts or, or matters related to that item. So, to that extent, they are public records and they should be forwarded to either Sherri or the city clerk for preservation and keeping so that you're not charged with the responsibility of producing any records at a later date.
Yeah, because technically, if this is a public records request, then we have to forward those records, but if we say we gave them to you-
Yeah, we're done.
Right.
I can help.
I don't want Stephanie taking my hard drive.
We have mine.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
I didn't want to go there, but I moved to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Your favor?